I'm gonna call the screen. I'm gonna call the meeting of the City of Kingston's only Board of Appeals to order. What time is it actually? 6:20? My name is Brian Cafferty and I'll be carrying this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how this only Board of Appeals functions. The Board is comprised of five members and two alternates, excuse me. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the City of Kingston and we perform the service to the best of our ability on a voluntary basis. The other board members are?
Donna Martin. Mary Vell.
Andrew Capone.
Okay. There will be a brief period of public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the Board as a whole, not individual members, and not other speakers or audience members, and a professional demeanor is expected.
Side and trunk of speakers.
So the first thing I'd like to do is ask if there's a motion to approve the minutes from the June 9th, 2022 meeting?
I'm in motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
All the paper? Let the record show the minutes. Okay. So the first order of business under new business is Daniel Hardy from 277 Richmond Parkway, which I had the pleasure of meeting today as I was like trying to see, see the...
During your due diligence.
Yes, I was doing my due diligence and almost broke my neck walking on the side. It was, uh, it was, uh, it was helpful actually to go there and see it. Anybody else get a chance to? I mean, the garage is way in the back.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so Daniel, if you wouldn't mind, if you would come up, just sign that pad there and give us a little bit of an overview of what we would like to do here and what we would like from the ZVA.
Should I stand, Mr. Dan?
At least you can do whatever you would like. And sit down, sit.
That's all right. Yeah, hi, everyone. You guys knew who I was, I haven't met yet. Yeah, so this is a fairly simple, I think. I mean, the garage that we have, um, we would like to convert into, I guess, a guest house, really mainly for my father-in-law, who's alien, can't really walk. I'm just waiting for him to sell his apartment in the city so he can move closer to us and live with us without being in a room in our house. And, um, what we're sort of asking for is, you know, we've talked to architects about the plans and there's a bedroom in the back that if we were to, and the architect suggested this, is look in back. It seems to be this kind of no man's land in the back. If we could build out, I think, 3.75 feet by about seven feet, then the bedroom, it would be more than just a bed. It'd be more space for a closet. That's really it. And then, so what we've been trying to figure out is, well, whose land is this? And though it's customary to not build right up to the property line, there's sort of still four feet left between the edge of our property line. It's about six feet, I guess, this guy.
I don't know the drawing.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know whether people, uh, I don't know whether people had a chance to take a look at the map that's included. There's a lot going on on the map. But what Daniel pointed out to me, and I hadn't actually noticed because it's so small, as soon as they find the map. Anyhow, in the back, there is a four-foot wide, nobody seems to know who owns strip of land that runs behind that structure and is in between his property and the neighbor in the back. So we don't know, we don't know what that is, but his property line goes up, you know, obviously up to that four foot. And I, my understanding is you're proposing with your, if I'm not mistaken, you're proposing to build up to your property line.
Which would still leave a kind of...
Because of that strip, that force, there would still be a four-foot buffer there. But you would be, you would be zeroing out your setback, which is, I believe, five feet, right?
Six.
It's, well, it says six foot in the application, but I believe it's five because I looked at the bulk density and that actually, if I'm reading correctly, I believe it's five foot.
Keeping in mind that 99, 49% of property is in the town.
Right. We're involved, just so you know, because the part of the property where the variance is occurring is actually in the City of Kingston, the majority of the property, the preponderance of the house, garage, everything is in the town of Ulster.
I applied at Ulster first, started the process.
And do you have to get a building permit from both municipalities?
No, they just moved the whole process here, so it's actually reapply.
Got it.
Because of that strain right on the border.
For your building permit act process through Ulster.
Right, for the actual building itself, so the variance is through.
Yeah, because you don't have a variance, it should be in the town of Ulster, only in Kingston.
Exactly.
So you're not, you're not even building into the city of Kingston?
Yeah, actually we is.
Yeah, yeah, according to the drawing.
Yeah, yeah.
According to the drawing line.
And I think exactly what we're extending is, is the variance is into the, yeah, if, if it's possible. And here it is.
So this, uh...
Yeah, yeah, it's a little piece of, I know where it is, I saw it.
Yes, it's this little real strip of land.
Yeah, right behind me, yeah. That whole way here.
This.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, um, since you're building out in the back, you had all this room in the front in the town of Ulster. Why didn't you extend where your architect decided not to put the plans moving forward without having to do anything with that strip there? So in other words, they could have extended it out this way because you're gonna take the garage doors out anyway. So why not?
We are going to build, maybe you would like to build a screen that works there. And then when we're gonna have to stop with the wires.
Well, you're putting a screen, a fortune here, a screen in fortune.
If we can.
It's the front, so what about all the four, and you've got eight cars that you're gonna be parking also? Four in the driveway and four on the street?
Well...
I mean, where are all those cars coming from?
We, I mean, this, we bought that house with a lawn, right, that's the garage. We wanna get rid of the driveway.
So, yeah, so...
So it becomes a yard.
Yeah, so it would make more sense to extend it out this way, shorten up the driveway, leave the back empty, and then you could still make your fortune in front.
Well, we're trying to use the shell of the garage and the foundation of it and the BS, save as much as we can so that we don't just rebuild the whole structure. So it's really just using what's there and, you know, building exactly halfway across, I think, the major theme and then doing a mezzanine. I mean, it was just the architect's plan and his idea of we could just make this room a little bit bigger.
I mean, that, I, the, is there anybody else, does any, I mean, this falls, this question that Donna was getting at kind of falls under, is there another way to achieve this without variance?
I mean, I think what we can do is just, it would just get smaller from, right? Which is, it's fine if it's a no, right, okay, well, you just won't extend out and just get smaller.
So orienting on that, like, what, you know?
This is the plan.
Yeah, but which direction is which?
Okay, this space, this is...
That's the back.
The apartment. So the, the, is right here?
Yep.
Right now?
And there's a walkway here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, my in-house is here, if you have a...
The driveway is...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in the driveway.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, Brian. Can you address the board or is it...
Yeah, he's trying to speak when, when he's done.
Oh, I was just wondering, because you said that you can address the board. We're just wondering if you can...
Back to, after the presentation?
Sure.
You'll have an opportunity.
Okay, we're just trying to understand.
I mean, I'm, I'm done just answering, answering my question.
Right, so, but the board still has ten questions. I know I have a problem, but anybody else have any?
Yeah, I mean, I have some technical questions, but we can get into that after we hear other things. Because I, there might be...
What technical?
Well, because I think that there, um, the, there might be an issue with the SBL numbers on this application and this survey because they don't match the county records.
Yeah, well, that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the, the issue only with that, which we're gonna wanna get sorted, is, um...
Yeah, I mean, we have to get that sorted. I think the building department does.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Yeah, so, um, EA, and the county records are notoriously inactive.
Yes, yeah.
It's just, you know, so, I mean, a real estate agent, I can tell you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I actually, I talked to John Heidecker about this.
It was John who did it, right?
Yeah, 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 I happened to be on the phone with him when I saw this application. I was like, hey, oh, I got you, can you go check this? And I don't know if you...
He resounded me an email and said, oh, I made a mistake, it, it might be that. I think the building department will make sure that they're not building up.
No, 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 it's not that. It's that my one, we don't approve of that.
Whether or not it's the election.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's my...
All right, so any, any decision we make should be subject to that, can you agree?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, is there anything else?
Uh, not at this point, no.
Okay, so, um, given that there's that four-foot strip in the back, um, and technically, yeah, it would be going to the property line, um, we, there's a lot of precedent for having issued area variances like this. I don't think, I don't think this request is significant, it's pretty reasonable. I also, you know, I also don't think that it changes the character of the neighborhood necessarily. Um, and I think it meets all of our, our criteria, as I can tell. So, um, all right. Um, so at this juncture, you're, you're done? You have anything else to add? Awesome, awesome. So, um, is there anybody here that would like to speak?
Sure, I would.
Okay. And just sign the pad and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Bill Sickler. I live on Hurley Avenue, but my wife and I have a house directly behind this.
So you're the backyard neighbor?
Yes. Is it a rental, sir? No, my daughter lives there. My biggest problem is the setback. I mean, you're gonna, according to you, you're gonna just disregard setbacks. Is that true?
Yeah, just so you understand, the whole purpose of the, the ZVA and the request for variance is that they're coming here because they need a, they're making a request outside of what our standard setbacks are. And it's up to us to decide whether or not it is reasonable. And so that is what we do.
You're talking about the no man's land. The original no man's land. Two feet of that, we do own, our fence is two feet inside that property line. Right now, his line sits exactly four feet from this property line. So if you put that admission on, it's gonna be on the property line. How is he gonna build the backside of that house? They gave out 40, 40's foundation there, the building's starting something else's property.
So let me clarify, let me understand based on, uh, on what you're seeing. So you're saying that, that line that we're seeing that's running back there is your property line?
Yes. That development recently came about, they left a white line.
That's what I thought.
That's what you're calling the no man's land.
Correct.
It's not no man's land, it's a white line. They're not built up to it.
Okay. Uh, all right, that's, I got your, I got your point of view. Do you have anything else?
Right, because if I ever take that stockade fence we live down there now, I have somebody guarding my backyard.
Well, the garage is kind of in your backyard already.
No, it's according to you, it's 60 yards.
Okay, but my point is, it's, it's not that far away.
It's, you're right, it's not that far away. So why are you letting them build up to the line?
It's only six inches from supposedly the line.
What's a six inch?
The garage to the supposedly line.
If you send a spool, it's gonna come down. And one corner's only three foot seven.
Okay, I understand.
And if you look closely at the survey map, follow the line, this property line, corner of the fence, the angle back that connects to his garage right now is actually about 12 for his property line. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You decide.
So I think, I think we're gonna just trying to understand how it's gonna be built into the roof so he knows, um, that it actually won't work. And it does make more sense to go out the front based on the things that you were mentioning. Um, and I brought some pictures, which I think might...
Just quick, before you get into, I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, Stephanie Sickler, 85 Amsterdam.
Thinking you'd sign.
I signed it.
Okay.
So I, I actually live in that house. So, um, that, we did some measurements and it seems like the math and the plans just don't make sense. And that's what we were trying to clarify here. Um, that's why we took the pictures with the rulers and stuff. Um, so if you could just clarify it and really we can understand that the plan logistically can happen, I don't think we're so close to it, but we feel working in this business that it actually can happen. We don't understand how they're actually going to build what they're proposing. You know, going out the front, which obviously would be the best answer. So that's, um, that's the garage where he would build the extension and that's supposedly where they have the property line. Then there's an easy way between, and then that, because you can't see the inches. This is your fence here? This is, my fence is here. Right, okay. And this is the garage, and this is where they have marked, the surveyor has marked the property line, which is 46 inches. So if he comes back four feet, it leaves only six inches, basically, right? To...
To the property line.
To the property line.
But that still means that there's a four-foot right away between that and the fence.
There's, I think it's only two, because they own two, um, we said they own...
The old, you know...
I think it's one of his fence, so that each person... Right, so we're just trying to understand that. I don't think anyone does. I think it's, say, you think, and I click on it, said no, and you, well, so I think it's just...
Yeah, that's, that's, what I'm interested in is, so that...
They have...
Yeah, they are. That, that's, that was the issue I had.
The no address comes up, who belongs to that, and you said, can?
It's...
No, but they're on the, no, if you look up the deed for the property, it says also includes the additional SBL next to it. So they're all the same thing, they just have two SBLs because they're two different municipalities. Um, and that's written out on the survey as well.
Yeah. So is your fence, is... So here's my fence. Right. And here's where his property line is supposedly, which is one, two, a little over three feet. So you own two feet from here, two feet from here. Yes, so mine, my plan, so he's only got like a foot if he comes from...
Well, not according to this survey map.
But that's why we keep that might be a comfort. We can't figure it out.
Okay, so...
Do you have a survey? We don't have a survey.
According to the survey map, the, the right of way, the right of way, which is, which on the survey map, it's right here, it's four feet.
Yeah. So is your fence in the right of way? Uh, my fence is two feet up from the right of way.
Where are you seeing on survey?
So, so we see on the right of way, it's four feet.
Well, it's, we're, the gentleman referred to as right of way, it's been called no man's land, but it's right there.
This, this would seem all that clear, the distance between the edge of the garage and the property line. That is entirely within the City of Kingston. This is the municipal line here.
Right.
So the, that's no, that's no right of way, it's not marked as a right of way here. That's the distance between the, the garage and the property line is four feet.
This, there is...
That's their stockade fence, that's just marked on the survey. That, that's it right here, it's the other property, that's their property. The neighbor's property, see, it's there.
Yeah, but, but the...
Because we don't know how it's gonna get...
There's, there's definite, there's definitely a, a space back there.
Yeah, yeah, that, which is there, which is theirs. That, the, the stockade fence is not on the property line. There's, there's, uh, there's, you know, a two or three feet space between their, their fence.
I don't think that's correct. Anthony, he, he said there's an actual right of way.
There was an actual two-foot right of way, which we put a claim in on it when my mother-in-law built her house. All right? And at that time, you were required to put your fence two feet on your side of the property. That's why there's exactly four feet between our fence and where the mantle bombs had their fence. There's four feet that was two feet for ours and two feet for theirs, and it's not no man's land.
The mantle bombs, which is his other neighbor on his side and not my one. That's all. But I, you but really the equipment too, how are you gonna get a back of the footings? I'm not sure. Without taking my fence down, because I won't, I just spent six grand on it.
What was the question?
How's he gonna get from the backyard, three foot of footings to, or for his foundation?
Natural, just go through the garage.
Yeah, 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 that's not, that's not, you could hand dig those footings and put it, pump it in, that's not a problem. But, yeah, I mean, I don't...
Does it make sense to go out the back for 32 square feet or out the front? I mean, I think that's the general question. Maybe the architect, they didn't even know. Wait, so how long is the driveway? When we're, we're squeezing that four feet here and the driveway's how many feet? Like, I don't know how long, I don't have any friendly for 32 square feet to go through all this. I just don't even think it's close enough.
According to the survey, the patio of the, the pool actually is directly on the property line.
Yeah, there is a fence, I think, right on the...
Right, the fence is over in the next one.
Yeah, 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 there's a small encroachment, looks like it's maybe a couple of inches.
Yeah, 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 it's about a foot.
Uh, it's, it's not...
I know, it's hard to tell, I'm basically...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So I'm for a visual, the, the, the property line is, for all intents and purposes, the edge of the patio on the, of the pool. Yeah.
So I don't...
Yep.
Yeah.
According, according to this, yours, uh, and there, and you're saying there's, there's a small potential encroachment on the fence?
Yeah.
You can, you can actually put a fence on the property line.
Yeah, that's not my property. So who's approaching my neighbor, who is in here? So that's not...
Now, you're saying you could put your fence on a property line.
Yeah, you can.
Now, was it ever, you had to put the fence two feet inside your property?
Not that I'm...
I am, so...
Because they used to say you had to put it two feet inside your property so you could go behind your fence and clean around your fence.
That might be up for municipalities, but the final, it's never been...
I mean, do you recommend?
Recommend.
We have a lot of this because in the City of Kingston, we have properties that are so close together and people can split their fences right on the property.
Hence the fence, you're gonna make it double, maybe it's forward on the side of the, it would have been the property just there.
Right, or...
Everybody, just like this, if you go, if you go put this garage right on the property line, that means you can never go behind that and paint it, you're trespassing.
What about the two-foot right of way?
That, no, according to you, that's...
There's a right of way here, there is, yeah, so you have the right of way, get two feet to, yeah.
Two feet.
Yeah.
Okay, um, is there anybody else?
Everyone has with this.
Okay. Come on. You're the next contestant?
Do you, you guys want to, can I just, go ahead? Okay, good, yeah, I just, okay. Thank you. Yeah.
I'm Ryan Schmidt, I'm with the 283 Richmond Parkway to the right of the property. So I was just gonna...
So if you're facing the front of the house, you're on the right?
Yeah. And, uh, you know, I think when I moved in several years ago, I was interested in the property adjacent to me because it's bald woods, and I was interested in maybe purchasing. So I went to Temple Holster, Temple Holster wasn't sure what it was, but they said it was a, um, you know, an Easter.
Easter, right.
And, um, they said if there's ever be drainage, forever need a road access, and also you have a tall one pole that go down and then there is, so they're like, you can't really purchase it, but you, they really, really know exactly where the lines are. Although I have, you know, three of the four stones in my property. Um, I never had assessed, I mean, um, sorry, excuse me, but I had the stones and they were pretty accurate. But, um, and now I just have a new person next to me, aside of me, Kingston, is just taking ownership, and he wants to come in and take down all the trees. And then now there's this question of this, this area too. And then, you know, I come out of my house and there's smoking pot in the woods. And I'm like, what's, what's going on here? Because I've never heard anybody in my woods before. And it's like, oh, I'm gonna take all these trees down. I'm like, you can't take these trees, this is not even your land. So if we're able to go right up against the edge, you know, maybe I can put a pool on the side of my house, which doesn't seem to be enough room, but maybe now there won't be, I can put another six feet.
That's the purpose of, of a variance. Um, if you have something that you would like to do and it doesn't conform to the zoning code and you wanted to make an application for the planning board, this board would hear that, hear that request and make that determination on its own unique circumstances and... Yes, that, that, the, the idea is, is this is not a perfect system.
Yeah.
So what we, what we try to do is balance these things out and make sure that we don't make decisions that necessarily dramatically affect the quality of life. Uh, and we have, we have criteria that we have to follow. Are there other alternatives that the person could employ to achieve the same result? Some of that's been mentioned, you know, could he go out the front? I guess if he went out the front, he would have to, we'd have to redesign the layout of the building. Um, but in, in this, this doesn't, in, because we hear, we hear more area variances than we hear any, of anything. And, um, and we, we are, we are often granting area variances where we know that, you know, they conform to the criteria and they don't turn, hopefully don't turn anybody's world upside down.
Correct. So then the question that came up about the fence, because the town of Holster, you addressed for the fence, and they would say you can put it on the, the line, but they recommend to put a foot in in case there's...
Encroachments and stuff.
Yeah, maintenance were arguing where the line actually is. And then, um, and also so you can take care of trees or whatever. But, um, I think that's it. Just the only concern I have is the, after the relative leaves, and I don't really understand the law regarding having another, another, um, you know, like Airbnb or allowed, allowed renter, and that's my concern. I'm not really concerned about, you know, what's going to be built there. You build there wherever you want, it's your property. However, you know, there are these guidelines that you were aware of before you walked home. And, you know, they're there for a reason. But my question is, do they, do they talk about that, about, like, renting or Airbnb or changing the makeup of the neighborhood? So it's a one-family, kind of like what you were talking about.
Yeah, that's literally this problem, which doesn't, not part of this tradition.
And that falls under, that falls under use regulations. We're talking about an area variance specifically. There are considerations that the board will have to go through in order to grant this and make a record, like addressing certain considerations of what they have granted on the area variance. I don't know. I think it's going up to the law.
So then, personally...
There was someone mentioned about, done, can we get done with him first? Okay.
So, no, that's, that's my, it was all...
Yeah, so also there is a, there's a, an overlying hardship, pretty closely. Where there, these, these folks are trying to deal with an elderly relative.
Yes.
Which is a... Um, which is a, not an uncommon problem.
Yeah.
So, um, and, and so, as our corporate counsel just mentioned, you know, there are, there are things that we can do, um, in terms of issuing the variance with certain restrictions on it. You know, to address issues like that, um, so that we, so that when the hardship and the use is no longer applicable, um, it maybe doesn't end up being a situation where it can be converted into a short-term rental.
Right.
Because that wasn't really the intended purpose of the variance, things like that. And, any other questions? Do you have any?
The thing I don't understand is, you allow me to go over that property line, their garage. If I came here and said I want to build a garage right next to his, would that be okay?
You, you would have to make an application.
I said I have to go for a variance, but I bet you I'd be turned out.
Why?
Well, well, I'm telling you, I don't want to be confrontational, but you sound like...
Well, that should be said.
I mean, that's what you're saying, one person can build a garage next to them.
I'm not saying...
Well, there's, there's a procedure that must be followed.
Right, and so the only thing I...
There's no way where to do that, and actually, the board should be consistent with the way they decide. So when, before they make any kind of decision, they are only have to go through the statuteary criteria, and address each of the considerations that are under statute before they make a decision in one way or another. And if you, so, put an application, yeah, well, you can move your fence right on the property line, no matter what. And you can put it along the property line.
No, we want a variance, we want to move it four feet.
But when you can't move it outside of your property, variance goes in, and only...
So the easement will remain though, that's...
That's no way, that's no way, that's right.
But I'm not even sure that whether rentability exists, I'm not sure...
Yeah, can we clarify that? Is there a way to...
Any kind of record, um, but basically, any variance that they're applying for has to go on their property.
Okay.
Um, and if there is reason to believe that there's a right-of-way that's actually on their property, that should be something that maybe the board would want to consider before making a decision.
If, if you want to confirm what yours had, you should have a survey done by the surveyor.
Sure.
Yeah.
Is there a way to resubmit, or before you make the decision to follow up? Because as long, even if you came to the property line, and even if I moved my fence, there still is this two-foot easement, which then is doable.
The property line is already established, by the...
The, the, according to the, the survey doesn't show any right-of-way or easement. So, so I don't know what, you mean, everybody's talking about this thing, it's not documented here. Um, like, that's between your surveyor and your town insurance company. Not, the, so there's, so there's...
But it's there.
Well, there's the line of the municipal boundaries, there's the boundary between the Town of Olster and the City of Kingston.
But they don't touch, right?
They do touch, yes.
Yeah, the line is the line.
The line is the line, and that line runs through Mr. Hardy's property. About, it looks like, about six feet from the property line.
Understood.
Which is why he's here, not in the town of Olster.
So the City of Kingston had the easement, that no man's two-foot.
It appears, if there is an easement, or a right-of-way, or no man, or whatever you want to call it, and whatever the width it is, there appears to be something there that is not owned by either you, or them, or anybody.
Beyond the judge's point, most people have already finished on it.
Uh, yeah, which is typically what happens with these things, because they're, they're kind of a relic from the development, and, and they were never really, they were never really clarified, a lot of times they're not even, um, they're not even written into the descriptions, and they kind of get lost. The perfect example is our paper roads, there are a lot of paper roads, you know what a paper road is? Right, so it's, it's a road that was proposed to be, was never built. Um, you know, and they exist all over the city, they exist all, all over the place. And, and you know what happens with paper roads? People build sheds on them, put their refuse on them and stuff like that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, behind our property, we always maintain that four feet, it's what it is.
Yeah, I was just back there, Mark, it was all clear, cleared out, nothing about it.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, it was very, it was very nice, okay.
I usually do it twice a year.
Wait, you're gonna say, oh, we're gonna submit another, or...
But you're, you're, you wouldn't be submitting anything, but, but the applicant might. So, um, what, um, there's a number, there's a number of questions on this application, and some information that we need to clarify. Um, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea if we tabled this decision, just so that we can deal with those section lot block numbers and a few other things. See if we can get any more information on this, um...
Three minutes?
This space, uh, that exists there, because I think it's kind of important to understand that a little better. Um, so, um, if you wouldn't mind, I think what we're gonna do is, could, would we be willing to entertain a motion?
Yeah. We're, we're, we're in motion to leave the public area open, right?
Yep. And to table the application, decision on the application. Okay, on, favorably table. All right, any knows now? Okay.
I gotta stand for a second. Okay, this is fun.
I mean, I think, because it's a big...
Yeah.
So I said, it's gonna come aside, but I don't know how far we can go.
So you asked if I definitely...
Ah, yeah, yes, he is, he is made mistakes. Generally speaking.
You're doing these researches.
Oh, yeah.
It's small work.
Yeah, I'm waiting for John to get back to me after the rest of the hour.
Not now.
Well, the first couple of houses are...
We made the large holes next to it.
I think, but that's... I'm not trying to say...
All right.
Sorry, turn, get us out.
So, this is, it's still open, so if there's any information that comes to light that clarifies the easement or anything like that, feel free to get it to us. Um, the, the contact person is Eric, um, you can get it to him.
I would refer to counsel for review.
Why is it here in... Why would it not be Towne Olster's here?
Because what, what they're proposing is happening in the municipality.
The back states.
Parcel is in both municipalities, the municipal, municipal line runs right through the backside of this property, and also yours. So you're the back, you're, you're the last house in the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so half of your garage is actually in the City of Kingston.
Half of my garage.
Half of the garage is in the City of Kingston, yeah.
All right, well, I'm glad that's over. Huh?
Hopefully I don't say that.
I'm trying to believe that that's gonna be... See what I get for, for thinking that I'm making...
Wait a minute, there's...
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What did they say about... Same.
Make it all good, beer.
Can we take a, um, a three-minute break, I wanna go to the, to, you know, commune of nature? Besides... I'm, I'm trying to...
You're Paul?
No, I'm Stacy, you know...
Oh, Stacy, okay.
I'm Grand River Head.
Okay.
She can't come to an unmasked meeting, she's sick. So, I said I'd show up.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I...
Check for the real property map, up in the fourth floor of the county office.
Um, I, uh, you know, I was, I checked, I actually pulled the deed on it, and it says, you know, that the other SBLs listed with it, but I don't see any right-of-way or easement in, in there, you know, and I looked at, you know, fucking thought about it, kind of like extensively, and he was like, you know, I was like, this is what I think it's supposed to be, because John admitted, he made a mistake, he wrote the wrong SBL number on the survey for the second lot, which is why it's the wrong SBL number on our applications, because it came off the surface, so I was like, you have to fix that, and I know it got updated, and I'm pretty sure Eric has the updated one, but I don't think that's in our package, and the application never got updated. Um, so, like, you know, it's like, you know, God, in your eyes. But, uh, you, I mean, I ask, so, hopefully, hopefully, I'll, I'll have John double check this again, but, um, you know, something is, um... Well, you're gonna get this one soon. And wow, there's so much more stuff in this, it's just written so much better, that's why it makes more sense.
So, five, five, five right here, in the city of one sixty, one fair street, Paul Allen.
Again, I'm not Paul.
What happened to Paul?
Paula, Paula's dead. She can't come to an unmasked meeting, basically, so I, I've been her, her spokesperson for quite some time. So, basically, we're looking to be able to just, uh, she bought a building that used to be a church. I'm the contractor, as well as her neighbor and friend, who joined her to residence. Um, everywhere she's ever lived, she's always had a sign and named it, the block we live on, and all of her friends named there now. So when she bought this building, and it had a sign post on it, one of her friends made a little library out front, and then made a sign to match the library, and she hung it up, and it caused a huge sensation, we took it down, and we've been on the merry-go-round, waiting to put our sign back up, so that's the whole thing.
And this is proposed to be a freestanding sign?
It is, it is, it is already a freestanding sign, she just wants to hang it back up. So it used to be a church that built, and had some...
It's not a church anymore?
Right, so...
It's a single-family home, is it not?
It is, so now it's a residence, she still has that post, she'd love to hang it back up, her friend designed it and called it the Fair House. This is her street.
Different rules, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, totally, that's what we can do, of course, I understand that. By accident, we went to historic and planning for the sign first, because that's, you know, where we go at.
It became an issue because there was something that was advertised, that had been at the Fair House.
Right, well, this, yeah, the sign was an issue because we were the one meeting first.
So what exactly is the Fair House? That this is a single-family dwelling?
It's Paula's house, but she thought she'd call it the Fair House, because she was on Fair Street.
But she was having, um, some kind of musical thing.
No, she thought, she didn't have anything, her friend, her friend is an actor, and he wanted to surprise her, so he like posed it as if he was doing a big performance for her, for her housewarming, thinking at that point we would already have a CO for her, it was just a housewarming, she was out of town, when they went and advertised this thing, so... She advertised it, I mean, she didn't even know about, I didn't even know about, I was out of the country at the time, she was out of the country, and we came back, and everything had like gone awry, and we were like, oh my goodness, who did what, we're having a what? And at the end of the day, she was just having a housewarming, her friend is a little theatrical, and he, you know, thought he would make it like a performance. It's not, it's a single-family residence, um, if you guys, you know, saw, you'd see her bathroom was a freestanding tub, and, you know, funky, you know, treatments throughout the building, that just are somebody's personal taste, just...
Yeah, the street is still a bridge.
Her house at the moment is in Stonebridge, unfortunately, I don't think that she might be able to live in that house because of the stairs going up and down, and so we were working on creating a new space that she'd enjoy, that she would maybe come up, gather down using.
Okay, so I see nowhere in this application, an authorization letter, uh, allowing for somebody else to speak on Paul Allen's behalf.
I didn't know I needed one.
You, you do.
The application.
Oh, I haven't spoken, I mean, I filled out the application, I haven't spoken to Eric for, going on a year now, probably. You know, because it was a very long project, just because it takes a long time getting some construction nowadays.
Okay.
But I didn't know that, and she just didn't come because it was an unmasked meeting.
Right, there's a long history here with this property, as I understand it, and, and...
There's a long history with her name, it was caused, I think.
Well, but with the property in general?
It was her name.
Okay, but the, the property was purchased in, it, how long has it taken for it to become, to be converted into a single-family house?
I'm sorry, it took a long time, my contractors are very busy, I owe them so much, and...
So the answer to that question is...
How long's it taken? I don't know, probably, no one permit for six months, eight months, maybe.
That's not the...
Yeah, and, we're not a year, the permits closed almost, they have final inspections, we're just buttoning up one or two things, but, you know...
And she wants a two-by-two freestanding sign out in front of the place for a single-family house?
So, no, no, she was just putting back, there was a sign posted on the building, and she...
Yeah, right, sure, sure.
So her friend, when she built her this library out front, we did the sign, and surprised her, made it the Fair House, and we didn't know that you had that permission, we took it down, but coincidentally, I mean, her neighbor, her house is called Lotus Pond Farm, she has a sign, if it aren't town, you don't have to get permission to put a sign, you know, it's just, some people want to name their, their house if they're allowed, I mean, so hypothetically, I'll ask this, the post is there, and that's why we're hanging it, but if she stuck the sign on the building, and still belonged to the Fair House, would it matter?
Uh, yeah, there's a sign, it's a single-family house, unless there's a valid, you know, business reason for there to be a shingle out there.
It's for...
Yeah.
It's, you know...
I, I, I don't know, anybody?
My, my concern is that we don't have anything to write in the owner of the house.
Well, I could vouch for...
We can, yeah.
Yeah, the owner has told me many times that Stacy advocates for, I've spoken to Paul Allen many times, so I...
Yeah, and just for the record, would she get something?
Get something, if someone said it, I mean, she signed a legal affidavit, affidavit is recently swearing that she's a single-family resident, she just can't be...
The application signed it.
Well, I filled it out and had her sign, I did the documents.
Stacy, if we, if we could just correct the record, make sure that we have authorization, do you just speak on her behalf? Uh, we're gonna look past it right at the moment, but let's get that rectified. How do people feel about this application?
Well, the application says that it's a freestanding sign, so that's gotta change. If she wants to hang it on the post, and it's a twenty-foot set.
Well, the freestanding is, is currently freestanding.
Yeah, it's...
There's currently freestanding. There's a transposed... It's an L-shaped...
I see it here, in the picture.
Right, there's some pictures.
There's a time post.
We just need maps, the library, it's there, so... It wasn't for any ill intent.
It wasn't for any ill-intention, I mean, it's, you know, in all honesty, if she called it Paula's house, would that be okay?
Oh, this is a lot to go through for a sign hanging on a single-family house. I, I, my, my feeling about it is that, you know, just no.
I'm just curious.
I, I'm sorry, but it's just, it's just like, it's a residential neighborhood, and albeit that used to be a church, but now it's a single-family house, so it has to be treated like a single-family house. I mean, if, if everybody on that street started wanting to put two-by-two signs on their...
It's like libraries, everybody wants the library they have, it's pretty cool.
Wait, I'm sorry?
It's like libraries in Kingston, like she built a little library, she didn't need permission for it. It's an amazing thing, people come every day and to have it, but it's still nice. It doesn't have to be a negative thing, and I'm just curious, you said, why go through so much trouble? What was so much trouble?
Well, me, making, doing an application, um, you know, coming before a board, asking for a variance for a two-by-two sign.
It was a favor, I came for a favor, you just took a sip.
I'm just saying, just put the sign and hang it on the side of the building.
I don't think that that's in dispute, I think what's in dispute right now is, are we allowed to have a sign number one?
No.
At all?
Not unless there's a legitimate use, and those types of signs, I'm not sure actually are, are two-by-two.
Well, the rule is two-by-two.
Okay, well, if, if...
We have to comply.
If she had a legitimate in-home business, like if she was a real estate agent and it was gonna be her in-home office, she's required by law to have a sign.
Yeah, no, it's not a business, it's just, oh, you know? At the end of the day, I live in a rural town, we have tons of rules, we go to meetings for the rules, you don't know if it's that big of a deal, you know? I'm her friend, I did it as a favor, I came here tonight as a favor. She wanted her sign, I was like, oh, no deal, I'll go to the meeting, it's a comfy stress. You know, did I think it was that big of a, you know, concern in City Kingston? I really didn't, and it was no trouble at all with the un不会再.
She wants to put a brass plaque on the door that says Fair House, that people see as they're going through? I doubt anybody's gonna make, but a two-by-two sign.
For anybody else to see, there was a two-by-two sign there, what her friend did was repurpose it. It's not, it's not for necessarily anything but herself. It's kind of like the fence with the planters, everyone's like, historical memoirs, perhaps, you want to name it.
So can I get a, well, first, is there anybody here that wants to speak to this application? Okay, so, um, can I get a motion to approve or deny this application?
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the application, you'll second me.
That, that sheet.
So I guess I don't need to send anything to speak on the bed, at this point, being that it doesn't matter?
What would be a move on at this point, but, you know?
I'm just curious, are there any houses in Kingston that are, have a name, that were not businesses?
I mean, there are, like, historic plaques, stuff like that, the Franz Rogan House.
And they're residences?
No, no, they're used.
I only ask for residences.
If there's a memorial or a historic plaque talking about the historical significance of the building, those are allowed on.
George Washington's son theater, right? I appreciate you.
And if you, if you want to look more in our code, if you review section 405-36, that's the signs.
Oh, yeah.
Second, they're...
She's sick. We're not gonna review code, we're gonna let her enjoy her space. It is pretty far, and I would put it inside the foyer, as she'd enter. So she could look at it as she's inside, getting a drink or tea, and just...
Paula's a favor. You oppose me?
I ask one other question. I don't know if it came from the city Kingston, or if her neighbor got it from another spot and moved it in front of her, but she has a sign that's from the church that says, "No parking." Just recently, there's a huge, uh, sign standing there that says, "Work someone," or something blocking, or it's called parking.
I pulled up there today to look at the...
The whole thing's bizarre. I mean, she's had a very contentious thing going on with the neighbor for quite some time, and hopefully that's completely fizzled out, he hasn't postured to anybody.
Okay, it's got nothing to do with us, no.
I didn't get that, shame.
Okay, I, you're talking to the wrong people.
I'm just asking.
And we have a really busy schedule.
I was just asking, where to go, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, good.
So you need to take up your time to ask some questions.
And you're in Ward 5 there, and we can also talk to your elder person, which is Nani, my mom.
Yes, I'm very sorry.
You know, you gotta let people talk.
Yes.
All right. Get ready, dude.
Getting the BS kicked out of me. What's that?
I don't have the agenda.
So, 151, 151, 165, Hill Street. Mr. Filey?
Theta.
Theta.
Yes, Mr. Ryan represents the company.
I'm them in sign, yes.
I want to put a six-by-six billboard in my house.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is, this is gonna be a very short application.
So, my name is Ron, I just recently purchased... He's good, okay. So I just recently purchased a property at 161 Hill Street. Uh, we're proposing to put a dormer on the building. It's currently at very fast speed, we're not going to raise the height of the building, it will remain the same height. The footprint of the building will remain the same. It's going to be torn apart and, uh, by the building and my head, which is all apartments. We're looking to a three-family, to a flat-handled. We recently attended a meeting, planning a historical report, and we were approved by then, so that from historical report, giving us approval for what we're proposing. We have talented drawings, I have them very great. Uh, the bedroom, and it actually is a wonderful suggestion indeed. We re-instituted the drawings, we re-instituted the door, which was removed originally. So, one of their requests was to re-institute the door and the window, which we did. Uh, one of the reasons I would like to have a dormer, we left it at, yeah, that's the end. Uh, one of the reasons I would like to have a dormer is because of the headspace and the space, which I'm using for myself. Also, it is going to be off the floor, this is going to be a self-sustained building, it's going to be like 9,000 ADW, so the house.
Yeah, so, and the application did it.
If you look at my name on the, on the, on the web, I can look at the first, I mean, off the rebuilding, it's a new apartment, it's a gated area. It's all solar panel, you know, the first, this direction. It didn't get me anywhere, but...
They didn't put a sign on it?
No, they didn't put a sign on it, but, uh, yes, it's gonna be a solar building, we're doing external staircases, rather than having interior staircase, we're doing external. There'll be a terrace for the backside, so each apartment will have a terrace except for the third floor apartment.
I have a quick, a quick question, um, the, the driveway between the two buildings, that's your driveway?
No, I have a right.
You have a right one, over that driveway?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
And also, uh, there are, there are currently two lots, we're attending a meeting on August 19th, planning zoning, and we're doing a lot line revision.
Okay, so you're gonna...
Yes, we are.
I forgot that question, can we just...
And we have, oh, we're with the drawings, you have the drawing, you have the parking? So we, we have adequate space.
So, we just, you'll need that other variance then?
Yes, the open space variant.
Well, need the open space first, we should combine.
Yes, correct.
Let's get all those questions off.
Oh, yeah.
And, and we also, I don't know if you have this, I have it relevant for this meeting, but we're going to have a majority of the parking, it's gonna be on, this property was purchased by Allen, and the current owner of this property, and it was sold in by the city of Kingston. The only proposed use of this property is for parking, so this property is gonna be for parking. This is a rich area, it's gonna say rich, I'm gonna touch that, we don't, okay, not at the course, but there's sufficient parking for all the apartments, which are now five and three.
And, um... So, with the deletion of the lot line, adding it in, you don't need the parking variance either?
Uh, you know, Susan had said it's probably best, Susan Cahill?
Yep.
Said that it's probably best to ask for additional parking in case there's guests, in case there's an overflow, there is the public parking, which, which they could use anyway.
Alright.
Except, but she, she had asked to take it, because, um, she, she, she feels that there's only, I'm presenting this to them, she feels there's only an adequate space for five, which is, which is a valid, uh, comment. I think there's space for seven, but I agree with five, five space, the drawing of the five spaces. Okay, so, so the, the, the application with Susan Cahill and the planning department is with five spaces. I just recently created this one for the planning department, so that's seven in work, but she wants to go with five with permission to change three more and include parking in this area.
Um, question, you keep referring to a dormer.
Yeah.
It's a seat, a treatment for a dormer.
This is a, this is a flat shed dormer, it's not the entire roof, it's erasing the attic. In essence, it's, it's, it is an additional floor, but it is a 21-degree, it's not a flat roof, it's 21-degree.
Right, I know it's...
It's reducing the roof angle in order to make the...
The glass, okay. That's a technique.
I was thinking about saying the terminology with what's happening.
Yeah.
Area variance.
Okay, also, but we're meaning the 35 and kind of, but, you know, we're...
Not raising.
But one of the reasons, one of the main reasons initially was to provide us an enlarged space, was because solar panels have year-round usage, you need 21-degree angle for some, I mean. But also additionally, it gives me the benefit of having a third floor apartment.
Right, and my understanding is this third level apartment, uh, which you're gonna occupy?
Yes.
Um, is, is going to be sprinkled all the way...
The whole building is sprinkled.
The whole sprinkled, I, I asked Eric about it, he thought it was just the third floor, I said...
No, the entire building.
The entire building is being sprinkled.
Man, I would sprinkle any building, but especially if it's with them.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna go to the trouble of doing third floor, you're not on this level.
Right, if you, if you, if you're above the key, the manager's gonna worry.
Right.
So, your whole family, will you get to the building?
My kids are very young, they're 12 and 13, so, I mean, I'm alone to them now, so, yeah.
Oh, in the future?
Yes, yes.
So, we gotta rent them before, you know?
Tempor, well, temporarily, yes, I have a sister, uh, who has some special needs, she will definitely be for me for now. And eventually, my, my daughter comes up and all, you know, my good love, so eventually, yes, I'm alone to the planet. Can I guarantee that they will be living in, no?
So, I have a question, the, well, actually, let me first... Like, did she hear this?
Lighting, man, amazes everything.
Yes, he does.
There are lighting standards, it's our news, don't be pushing that.
Some full-spectrum lighting in here right now, feeling.
Want me to put that away?
No, no, it's all right.
There is a little light switch here.
Uh, hold on. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions?
So, how much height are you looking at at the building you're going?
Same, same.
Same, same, 35.
The ridge, the ridge of the roof is gonna stay right where it is.
Okay.
And increase a couple inches, just because the reframing itself is going to increase, because right now it's framed with, like, rough-oned QI fours, and it's gonna, like, so just the depth of the roof number is gonna cause a couple inches to increase, but the ridge is essentially gonna be in the same place, changing from seven on 12 slope to three on 12 slope, to get back there, and then that third floor, I think.
Yeah.
And there's a three-story building, literally, right next to it.
So that height is not... Right, this is, what's in that building right now?
It's derelict. It's derelict, it's, it's in dire need of renovation, and, uh...
I'm happy to have that building.
I'm ready for that, for that woman, that's my uncle.
Me, me and you both, for 20 years.
What, the one on the corner, it's hard?
This one, yeah.
Pardon?
Thank John, thank you.
I love that, too.
Yeah.
It's great buildings. Reminds me of New Orleans, something New Orleans is like about it. The porches and stuff.
And is there another issue with the open space needed for each apartment?
But if they do the lot line revision, the open space requirement is no longer an issue.
Yes.
Okay, so, like, that's it.
And, and I, I've received a, a thumbs up that, that the lot line revision... Well, interestingly, it's interesting, because the first thing I was gonna go, they should delete this lot line.
Yeah.
And, and so, I'm glad to hear that you're doing it.
Yeah.
Mary?
No.
Anthony?
Um, so my only question is, um, you know, I actually had to check, but we're, we don't have a, the increase in units, we still have a use problem, right, I mean, or else they're...
So that's also... Yeah, not according to what I'm gonna do, but you definitely able to have five units in the RT.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, this is a, I mean, this is kind of an ideal situation, because we're, we're gaining a hard bend element, we're improving a derelict building.
Do they want to see the ceiling?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking, or...
Actually, actually, the, I mean, it's, it's actually, it doesn't look bad, it's clean and neat.
Yeah, but it's...
But it's, it's, but, with the, with the rubber roof.
And what the, the house will shingle it. But, uh, but other than that, I mean, the property is leaving the pin, uh, I was there today, and it's gonna look great when it, when it's done by all looks of things.
And then you gotta go on next, go to the next.
That building is terrible. You know, she doesn't care, she lives in Washington or Maryland, I heard, and she just pays the taxes, and she doesn't give a damn about the building. Yeah, well, that'll eventually...
You're broken, boy.
So, Eric, my only question is on the parking, um, so, I mean, we, if you can't fit the required amount of cars, and we're just looking for a variance on the parking requirement?
Yes.
It's written, you know, it's written, not the way that I expected in the application, that's all. But you're, I, I didn't check how many parks on there.
The three spaces.
Yeah, 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 so you need a variance on three spaces.
Well, they're asking for a variance on three spaces, and that's at the, uh, at the best of CCAO thought, that they, you know, they, they apparently, they're deleting the lot line, they probably have enough parking. We do, um, but they're asking for the extra order of reason on that.
Susan thought, I'll tell you why, Susan thought it was too tight, and she was concerned, I mean, it was a bad concern. She was concerned that they would have to, they would have to, uh, travel over the, the footpath.
Well, you know.
But I think regardless of the travel...
We're in RT here, right?
There is two driveways there.
Yeah.
There are two curbs, there are cuts, yeah. Uh, and, and are you planning on, in that, that area beyond what is obviously looks like you could easily park four cars before you get to where it gets a little rough and tumble?
Right.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, the intention, oh, I...
That's what I was about to ask.
Yes, yes, I, I've already had contractors there, it's gonna cost about $15,000 to $20,000.
You're gonna do some rock removal?
They're gonna completely make that area flat.
Oh, yeah.
Although, yeah, park the cars there.
Right.
So, that, just only in your schools, I'm not sure why you need a variance for too many additional cars, but there's a, you know, some parking, right?
Yeah.
That's not an issue, I don't think.
Yeah, there you go, just cross them all.
Talking out loud. I, I do need to know about... Pardon?
Does Eric have a...
No, no, this was just produced two days ago.
Alright.
And I just presented this to John Stare today.
Is it part of your submission?
Uh, I was supposed to, yeah, but this wasn't given to Susan yet, she hasn't seen this, you know.
Alright, so, so, just, um, just if you could, if, you probably have a PDF of it, just get it to Eric, say, sure, put it in the file, that would be good. Yeah, no, um, this is gonna be nice.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just, I love, I love this spot, you know, the cliffs and the rock.
That's nice.
I knew that house was a wreck, and I bought it, it wasn't, I didn't care about the house, there was a little...
No, no.
Location, and you got this, the, um...
Pretty sure, I don't know, there's no need to be a single bear.
Well, yeah, but I didn't think of... What I like about it is because you're only a block away from downtown, but with that, you don't know you're down the block.
Right, exactly.
You know, I'm trying to brace my throat, you know. So this is where we walk, I'm trying to, I don't know, maybe, because I'm...
So, the last question I have, and that's now, um, I mean, that, that was the question I had, but I'll just, we can have a, an open discussion. Um, you are, you are saying that you're gonna occupy this building. Um, do you have, do you have any objection to that? Um, do you have, do you have any objection to that remaining a uh a condition or the variance, because once you're issued the variance, it runs with the property? And so, um, are you okay with that being a condition?
For me, yes, but then uh.
Yeah, the issue, the issue is that they're definitely.
Yes, yes, they're definitely.
Essential, it's key things, because this is, this is a permanent change to structure itself. It's not something like, like we're allowing someone to, you know, have a fence close to it or or something. This is a, yeah, a permanent change to structure, and then, you know, there's the potential saying that it's a taking, saying that, you know, it limits his ability to ownership. You know, and uh if he sells it or so forth, it's not like we can.
If we're move. On on an aside, if we were to put a, you know, some type of restriction like that, and then it no longer, that variance would no longer be required by future code. Does that become moot at that point?
It then becomes moot if if it's.
So, so we don't.
Under our new code, this would need no variance.
Alright.
What if the department calls, it it this condition doesn't stand for either.
So, what do you mean? The only thing I've.
He just needs a special permit from planning board.
Yeah, it does require a special.
Oh, yeah, yeah, true, yeah.
Alright, so never mind, uh, that's that's all we wanted to know, alright, so I I don't, I don't, I don't see that as a as something we need.
For the purposes of just looking at the variances with regard to the third floor.
Um, no, the third floor and the parking.
Parking, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's a, it's a half-story variance and a variance for the three parking spaces.
Yeah, yeah, they're everything the same.
What, he needs the, no, the area variance for the half-story is us.
Correct.
Yeah. The parking spaces is a variance for us.
Parking spaces?
Planning board, because it's it's, it's a municipal lot next door.
We have to, we have to give him a variance and allow for the allocation of spaces in the municipal lot. And if there wasn't municipal lot, we would be allowing it for on-street, if there was on-street parking.
Well, can we also just give him a variance for the building to that bulk without requiring as many parking spaces? We can just give an area variance for the parking requirement.
Oh, yeah, reducing the.
Reducing the total parking requirement, and then the other.
But I, I think that's the way as proposed is.
Yes, okay, yeah.
That's why I was wondering.
Cahill wants to to be a a variance for three additional parking spaces to be allocated to the.
Okay, yeah, whatever.
And whatever supplements.
Okay, oh, you know, it'll have me, it'll have me needing to get the phone call from her after being beat up on me.
You're not gonna be that on me. I thought this gone actually pretty well.
Yeah.
Hey, the last things in the world to be concerned about, a sign is not one of them. Uh, is there anybody here that would like to speak to this application? Okay, do we have any more questions?
No, I don't.
Would somebody like to make a motion specific to the third floor and the three additional parking spaces to be allocated in this adjacent municipal?
We're doing separate motions for each one, right?
Well, can we just do them both at, both at the same time, or do you want to do them?
I don't know.
Is there any application?
Yeah, you can do one application, you can, you can do a motion for both, they are separate variances, obviously, but.
But it's all my work.
Yes, so a motion to approve those two for this application.
Those two for this application.
I'll second that.
Okay, I need a sheet.
So, on the technical part of it, is the, is the open space variance being withdrawn because it becomes moot with the lot line revision?
Yeah.
I just don't know technically how.
Yeah, my understanding that it's withdrawing is no longer seeking that variance here tonight, if for some reason in the future you can come out.
Can you work it?
Yeah.
Regardless.
Also, is it going to be the thing that's gonna be primary residence?
You know, he's, it's just, I mean, he's, he's owner occupying it, but we're not requiring the owner occupying.
The adults are not gonna require that.
For the variance, it's not a contingency.
Uh, no, it's not required at all, anyway.
Oh, there you go.
Um, the only thing the new code would require is that if you wanted to short-term rent any of those units, it would have to be owner occupied. So, you couldn't, you couldn't like Airbnb any of the units in the building if you didn't live in one of the units of the building.
Well, yeah, that's gonna be a requirement likely of new Airbnb.
Yeah, that's what I was like, that's a new, that's a new.
And Anthony, you seconded it.
I second it, yeah.
So, what about single families for the Airbnb's?
Um, you, you would have to owner occupy, so like you could technically Airbnb your house for like a weekend, if you lived there all the time, but um, under the current proposal, non-owner occupied short-term rentals are not allowed anywhere in the city.
You got the city.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into this can of worms, but I'm not convinced that's a, that's a particularly good idea, but that's a, that's an argument we got later. Um, okay, uh, so we um, we're basically approving your um variance for the third floor and for the three additional parking spaces. And we know, we understand you're withdrawing the uh, the, to allow the usable open space on the adjacent lot is being withdrawn because you're merging, you're merging the two lots.
Have you found a building you're gonna work with yet? You, you, so you're, you're, you do a lot of, you better write the books off?
Yes.
Yeah.
I I don't think uh this this project would be way too expensive to do. We've, we've met before.
You live very familiar.
Yeah, we've met before, and and in these days.
Uh, we have in Ryan's Island jail.
You know, I am very happy to say that I've never been anywhere else. Either behind or in front of the bars. No, I think we know one through um the sustainable and green building stuff.
It's pretty possible.
Uh, I can't, I can't place it, so anyhow, um, we're good, so if you guys wanna go, then was this something you wanted to leave, or do you?
Yeah.
He's pretty good at stuff in here.
What I don't need is more paper.
I'll show it to the for for me.
Okay, just for the record, all those in favor on this vote?
Um.
Aye, any opposed?
Well, thank you for taking your time, that your personal wants to do this.
Yeah, and and we see the abuse I get, and you know, in that opening statement, if you see that we're unpaid. That's what I said, I think we should take. So, yeah, well, this is all volunteer, and every time I greet that, I go, are we sure about this?
Yeah, I know, it's okay.
Well, it is appreciated, you know, what you do keeps things along.
It does.
Somebody needs an engineer seventy-three crasher.
Seventy-three crasher.
I have Tony, Tony calls every couple months, I'm gonna get to it eventually.
Okay.
Yeah, well, she'd be gone on somebody's desk, so.
Find us tomorrow.
Alright.
You may go.
You may go.
What's next, a sign? A sign, a banners.
I knew a conversation previously. In my office this morning.
Yes.
Hi. I don't know the exact details of that other project, I need to research that, because that might, that application might have been withdrawn, we'll discuss it.
Are you talking about the the precedent issue?
Yeah.
Um, I I don't remember it being withdrawn.
Yeah, they called them on the check back list.
Oh, they're not pursuing it?
They did, they dropped it, never pursued.
Okay. Alright, um.
Who's next, Washington or?
Yeah, one second, let me just finish writing this up.
Because the venue never did change.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to give your application to my first.
It's been so patient, yes. Yeah, well, did it, she's so terrific.
Okay, next up, hello.
Sign.
You're the next contestant on the variance debate.
Yes.
Alright, um, you wanted to briefly just review what you're, what you're here asking for.
Um, so we're just looking to put the banners one on each side of the building, one on the left side. And I think it exceeds, the banners we're looking to put exceed the size limit and the time limit.
Right.
Just, they'll probably be up on average, a month or two, while I know the shows are, because they're advertising.
Okay. Um, anybody have questions? I have a number of questions, but I like to go last, so I'm not influencing anybody.
I was very impressed with the pictures of the banners, yes.
Yeah, they're big.
They're big?
Yes. They're big?
Not unlike some other things that.
Banners, is that a bigger, where?
Well, it's hanging on the buildings.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, those have variances, though, like the shirt factory.
Yeah, that's something, which is my favorite, yeah.
We're talking about the whole building being painted.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, you mean like uh murals and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of something different, so, um, so any other questions, Anthony, so, so the scale of the banners that you have um superimposed, what what are they, like, three or four by fifteen feet or something like that?
Twenty by four.
Twenty by four, twenty.
Twenty, yeah, twenty by.
Four.
By four foot, okay, so, um.
Which allowed is eight by four.
Right, I was about to say, it's a sheet of plywood, is there any reason why that isn't ample for, I mean, it's a four by eight sheet of plywood, basically, it's a pretty, pretty decent sized sign. Um, I'm I'm saying they're gonna be plywood, obviously, they're gonna be temporary and stuff like that, but but um I'm just wondering why you, why you think you need them to be twenty feet as well?
Um, I guess, how, because they'll be so high up, looking for people to see them while they walk by, um, for the text to be big enough to read, um, to have a big enough image to catch, you know, like, make a presence, make a presence now.
Well, they they don't have to be that high, the only reason they're that high is because they're that long.
Yeah.
Um, they could be lower, lower to the ground, and therefore easier and closer to the view of the drivers by. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be correct?
Yeah.
That if they weren't as high, like if you brought a four by eight sign down to where it was just eight to ten feet off the ground, it would be a whole lot easier uh to read.
So, one has um edges in front of it, though.
It does.
Yeah, that one would be. Right down.
Yeah, like, so the sign would have to, the sign I'm talking about, the size I'm talking about, um, maybe go back, um, would start where that is at, where the bottom is, you'd place it at the bottom, and we'd go eight feet up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just seeing what she's saying, that if you.
The edges there, if you cut that down, if she has to put it down, you're not gonna see that part.
If you have four foot by eight, you're not gonna be able to put everything in that eight foot thing to put all that printing pictures, it's not gonna, it's not gonna go.
And down here, if she goes down from the ground, whoops, yeah, it's gonna be behind those edges, and you're not gonna see it, yeah, see, so.
Okay, guys, all I'm telling you is these signs are huge.
Yeah, they're big, they are, but it's a big building.
And they're proposed, and they're being proposed to stay up, this is a precedent.
Yeah.
So, you you do this, you do this once, and and there'll be others that do this.
Shirt factory is bigger.
Shirt factory's painted on, and they, and they got a variant.
Well, that's what she's trying to do.
Yeah, that's a permanent sign, it's different.
No, this is not, this is not.
These are temporary.
They're not temporary, that's my, that's my point, this is temporary, the shirt factory is permanent, and it's much bigger.
Yeah.
And I have a question, so every time, are, is there gonna be, are you gonna be seeking variances every time, like, a new, you know, there's a a new display or something at the gallery or or.
That's.
I, from what I understood, the variance would allow for multiple temporary signs.
Yes, so, so, we're, and and we're also talking about leaving these valuable large signs, two of them, not just one. One on each side, uh, up for as much as three months, the the code, the code is thirty days. And not for nothing, but we made a, uh, we made somebody take down a temporary sign, because it.
We did, yes, we did, because we were, it was advertising, it's different, yes, it was.
There were, there were any other issues with it, but we didn't, we, the, we didn't, because the material was made out of, they were proposing for it to be permanent, but it wasn't made out of permanent materials. We had to take it down, all I'm saying is, is I understand what they're trying to do, and I don't think they're unattractive or anything.
Yeah.
However, the, the, there are a lot of buildings in the city of Kingston that could be asking to do this once we do it once, and that's all I'm saying. Once the genie's out of the bottle, it's hard to put it back in.
Well, I propose a few things that make this unique to the space, um, which uh, being the fact that there's, that um, its orientation to the street and the, and how it's much longer than it is wide, makes it like uniquely situated for this particular space, um.
Yeah, I think it's scaled well.
Yeah, yeah, um, you know, so I think if we can, um, if we can identify, uh, if, you know, if we decide that this is an acceptable, uh, you know, uh, uh, reason for a variance, if we can identify things and make it specific to this application, then we can avoid the precedent problem by kind of defining why it works here, and in any other space, the fact that it's a new scenario.
I like that.
Okay, um, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure I'm biting on that one, but uh, but it's, look, I, I it's a beautiful building, it, you know, it's a beautiful, they they do beautiful stuff there, that is not at all the, that is not all the question, I'm sure the artwork's gonna be tasteful and all that stuff, but it's just opening this up to people, you know, there was, if you look around the city, there, buildings used to have huge signs hanging all over them. We, we don't, we, we don't basically do that any anymore, some of them were attractive, some of them weren't that attractive, um.
Keeping in mind, this will require a planning board approval also.
Right.
It's an appropriate court.
Now, if she's looking to change the sign, so it's, it's gonna be a different sign being hung, same size, same locations, how is the, you know, it it's.
We don't have a shortage.
Potential different approvals needed each time the sign changes.
Well, and the thing is, is that it, it, and I don't, I don't, I mean, we have an artist here, uh, you, 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 right, so the problem is, is that that aspect ratio doesn't necessarily work for every piece of person's art. Sometimes it requires a different layout.
Well, that was my first thought, it's like.
That's an art center, UPEC has, has banners.
But, yeah, and they're not here for a variance every time, they're in a camera.
And how, how is that granted, is that, or is it just something that's granted?
They've been just doing it.
They're just throwing up temporary signs without permission.
They've done it for quite a while, yeah.
Yes.
And no one says anything?
They're pre-willing, they issue, they, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I just clarify that, although there would be, we would be changing the banners, they'll always be the same size?
So you're gonna work with that same aspect ratio, right? So they're not gonna go this way, they're just gonna go, and, so they're always gonna be the same, uh, four by two.
Is there, is there a scenario where the artwork can be designed that it could be a little bit shorter?
Um, bringing down.
Like if it was like four by sixteen?
Yes. I'm sure it could, though, I mean, the only thing which I guess doesn't help it, but it just sucks for us is that we did have them printed already.
The card.
So, how many of them did you have printed? Just the first show?
Um, we had three printed.
Three different shows?
Freezes shows were cool, because I had to come to the meeting and do the process. Um, one is no longer available, so now we have the two that were being published.
Okay, well, I mean, if we had to, we could approve for the first two and then do a different approval from that point on, make it smaller, um, if we needed to, um, just so that you wouldn't have to end up wasting your artwork, but, um, so that's doable, but I, I mean, I do kind of like the idea of them being a little smaller, twenty feet is.
But you're, she's trying to catch the eyes of the driver going past.
And sixteen feet's not enough?
Maybe not.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I, I personally don't really, I think it's gonna look great, you know, I, you know, I think one of the, um, is.
This won't be the last happening.
Oh, I'm sure.
But we really haven't had any others, given the fact with UPEC, because they probably don't, doesn't have a variance allowing it, I mean, this is no different than when we said UPEC, and those signs, those temporary signs are much, much bigger than this.
Uh, I, I don't know that, it's a bit tricky, because I haven't really, I don't, I don't have an image in my head.
Much bigger, but they're similar size.
Yeah. Whatever, um, my other, my other issue is the length of time, I've got, three months is just a problem.
Is there a reason why it has to be up three months? Um, yeah, we're looking to advertise the shows, so, you know, some are up for thirty days, but some are up for, like, our next show's up for two to three months.
Okay, so not all of them are gonna be up to thirty, three days?
Yeah, it would vary.
You know, I just, I mean, my, I, I get that, I get that the building's there and you, the space and everything, but, you know, I mean, the, I, I just, with social media and all these different new technologies to get the word out about shows, do you?
I mean, we're looking to.
I feel like signs bring a violence to a neighborhood, especially something like this.
I draw up some sentences, it's cultural.
Have you ever actually seen some of the early streetscapes?
Oh, yeah, the, the, the exhibit that said Frank Nixer kicks it right now.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yes.
The signs, yeah.
You know, yeah, there is definitely a critical mass where that kind of.
Are you control? They went, we passed that critical mass, let me tell you.
But, but, but you'd probably love it if I had for those signs still existed.
Yeah.
Yeah, here and there, but they were everywhere, and there was no consistency, they were all different, I mean, the Kini Theater sign with the BSP sign, it was like forty feet high, it was, it was very cool, but, um, you know, again, it was just everywhere you looked, that, I mean, we did away with billboards all over the country because they just littered all over the, yeah, I'm just.
But were, but were they approved, like, you know, that's, that's part of the thing, like, we're here to make sure that this particular one fits the community character, it's visually appealing from the street or from, from, um, like, a vehicle, from, from a pedestrian point of view, like, I, I kind of think that that's what our job is here, is to make sure that it works with the character and it's not gonna take away, where if, if this was, we're gonna put a billboard on the top of the building instead, I would say absolutely not.
Not, not that it's relevant to this discussion, but I'm just curious, what is form-based code, I would say about this?
Uh, it would allow smaller temporary signs, and anything with this sign, we would have, it would be in front of us, and we would make the same determination as we're doing right now.
Right, but we would be making it as an, as an instant basis. They're asking for a variance to do this continually.
Now, also, Eric, quick question, because I'm just looking at pictures of UPEC and any of the signs I said, um, are you aware of whether the temporary signs they have are not in compliance with our code, so I'm looking, like, they look like they could be eight by three or something like that, and there's.
Thirty-two square feet is, uh.
Yeah, eight, four by. Yeah, and then if they're changing them every thirty days, then they would be complying with the code.
Uh, yeah, but, yeah.
But, and I'm, I'm just, just looking at. There's a person standing there next to them.
Yeah, they, they actually made me close to conforming with, with the code.
And I'm not saying that should be a determining factor on whether or not you should, but just to, to kind of put in perspective is then, you know, potentially, if this starts to get done, then it may be something that UPEC's gonna be looking to have larger advertisements as well.
Yeah, but, but you see, the interesting is, this brings up what Matthew, which is a good point, brings up what Anthony was talking about earlier, is that that treatment, because of the, uh, uh.
With the columns and the visual.
What are the, the, the marquee?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, you would have those banners floating in the space over the sidewalk, where here, because the way the building's oriented to the street, they're on the sides of the building, and it's a very, it's, it's a three-story building, so it's got the verticality, so the, so the aspect ratio, and it's definitely an attractive proposal, what they're proposing, using the question, that, my, my problem is, is that it's, it's so divergent from our code that is the issue.
Just say if you're approving or whatever's proposed for approval, you guys make sure that the language is, is very limited and clear-cut, that, you know, I mean, to whatever size is being approved, limited to where it's being placed, and limited in, in the amount of, of time, which.
And you're a tenant, not an owner, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and the owner is, the owner is okay with these signs on the building?
That's right.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get a chance to read it word for word.
Yeah, she signed, she signed it.
She signed off on it, um, the, the, the other issue is, is that we don't want this variance running with the property.
Well, so that's one more thing I was gonna ask Matt, is like, is there, um, is there a way that we could do this that would allow them this for a period of time to be able to change temporary sign for like, let's say, a year, right, and then that, the variance, since it's temporary, that it allows them time to change it a bunch of times, and then they come back there in a year to either redo that or?
Maybe she's gone from there, from the businesses there, and that limited.
Yeah, exactly, like, you know.
We're not issuing the variance to the property, we're issuing it to the tenant, I want to make sure that this is not something that is run with the property.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And it transfers from one item to the other, so that would be.
Plus, since it's so big, I think it is, and as you were saying, it's so far out of what our particular, like, the, the guidelines of our code are right now, yeah, I think it's worthwhile to revisit this and see if it works, if anybody complains about it or anything like that.
My, my, I, I gotta be honest, I, I hear you, I, my only concern about this is what happened with, with BSP and that whole thing, and, um, you know, we were very adamant that they could not keep that sign up because it was a temporary sign, didn't meet the, the, the criteria for it, it had been up more than thirty days, and this is one of the most litigious individuals in the world.
That's, you know.
We definitely want consistency.
Yeah, there is, I think there's a lot of things that can be said about, um.
You got historic district versus non-historic district.
Because that's actually.
Now, when, when is this, when are you going to need to be using these signs for, for the purposes?
Um, it's from this fall.
Okay, but do you have like a show that you're advertising currently that's gonna be?
Show, start with the company.
Starting.
Starts this weekend, right?
The seventeenth, one of them starting, and then the other one is already up, until,
just sign is already up.
Because I was feeling.
Show, yeah.
It may not be, it may be a prudent thing for, for, for the board to, to look into, first of all, I, I was told about this, this previous application, so I'm afraid of whether the application was denied by the board, or whether the application was withdrawn, and comparing that as well as, uh, making sure that we have the language, if, if someone is going to make a motion to approve, um, the variance, uh, that, that we have the appropriate language in place, making it, uh, you know, not running with the land, that it's being granted for these limited purposes, or after having, and the placement of the sign in addition to the size of the sign, um, and, so, like, you know.
Yeah, so, Mike, I guess the way to avoid that is, is that we're, we're issuing the variance, um, and, again, this is all legal, right, because when you do issue a variance, it runs with the land.
Yeah, exactly.
And it, it, it's issued to the building, to the structure, and then conveys, the, where here, I think the way we, we can avoid that, break it, is that the, the variance is being issued to a tenant. So it's not, uh, it's not a permanent, uh, it's not a permanent, I don't know whether that, that solves that problem or not, uh, but we, we certainly do not want to, uh, we do not want to, we, we're trying to figure out how to make this work, but there are genuine issues.
Can we write a variance that has a, has an expiration date?
I don't, that's a cool question.
In general, variances run with the land.
Right.
So that's, that's the general.
That's my big concern.
And, uh, yeah, so I, I think it may be prudent, uh, for the board to either defer to this hearing open or defer to closing hearing, table the vote till, till the next, uh, next meeting.
When is this next show going up?
Um, September seventeenth.
So, you're, that'll be another bit of wasted artwork, um, unless, of course, you want to put.
Same, that's waiting for the end before.
No, I, dang it, Sid, that was my concern, but, um, yeah, so, I, I, I'm uncomfortable right now because there's a lot of unanswered questions about how we can craft this, and just understanding, you know, how we need to word this, um, and, um, I would, I think it'd be a good idea to maybe table this, and I hate to do this to you because I know that you've got this artwork and, and everything, and I didn't say anything, but, um, we may need to, uh.
Hey, we're talking about a sign.
Yeah.
In the meantime, if you want to put a small four by eight, just get through this next show, and something you can.
That you probably do relatively inexpensively.
Honestly, you could probably cut that sign up and make it bigger for on your sign each side of the building.
Because you got spaces there in between everything, you rightly.
So, yeah, three, four by eight.
We'll take this picture.
Six, eight.
Okay, let's, let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's have this conversation.
Come back and help.
Yeah. Yeah, I would like, I'd love to hear a motion on that, and can I?
But, um, so technically, we're in a public hearing, so are we gonna close the public hearing, because then we can talk to Matt and make a determination without.
Yeah, unless you guys want, like, a bit, or is it no one else looking, is there any additional information that you want to provide to? So if you guys want to close the public hearing, you could table the vote, and then that way I can help assist the board with crafting, working for, for any kind of proposed sign.
So can you get a motion to close the public hearing?
On motion for the public hearing.
Also.
Eyes like this.
Yeah, so do I, honestly, but, you know, we, we gotta check our eyes.
Um, so how does it work with handling?
So, we, you would be on the agenda for, uh, for the next month, yeah, from October.
Do you have a decision or do we?
It would be, it would be, um, I can't promise, but I would, I would hope to think that in that timeframe, we could, we could sort this out and come up with a decision, whether it's, you know, whether it's a no or some kind of modification that allows you to do, um, what you're trying to, what you're trying to achieve here. I hope you understand, I hope you can understand from the discussion and debate that we, we've been having, that this is not a simple, it's not a simple situation, because although you have a beautiful, uh, you know, uh, treatment here and everything, it just opens up the door as a precedent for other, you know, other people to do temporary signs that are, don't conform.
The board definitely needs to be consistent with the type of approvals that they, so there's a couple of questions regarding previous applications that I would like you to just see as well.
What's mounted?
You could just come up with a four by eight sheet zone and find a way.
Yeah, if you want, I think probably the best thing is wait till the board, since they, they've, they've heard your application, if you have some time, wait till after the, the meeting is adjourned, and then I'd be happy to talk to you about the legal aspects and, and, and central things, and I'm sure the other board members would be, be happy to discuss it in their.
One of those one of us will listen.
Right.
Yes. Okay, so all those in favor? Okay, I'm gonna stand these. All right, you're in, sign. Sign that one, then catch the other one, and then I'll sign them when they come back.
That's the nominee?
Oh, yes.
Poor lady.
Oh, yes.
Oh, that's very significant. You know, I used to be on the heritage area, I mean, when they were shooting.
Oh, your mom was sort of very good.
Listening.
Listening to all this stuff.
Yes. It's like, oh, that's interesting. Very interesting, yes.
So, oh, we still have one more.
Yes. Say why? Yes.
Why did I think we were done?
I'm simple. You're simple, yes, you're simple.
I don't believe it.
Yeah. That's why I wanted to check in, uh, forty-seven.
I've been there, was there today, I was your neighbor down the street for.
Really? Anyway, so that's what I need to prove.
Yeah. Did, for, um, to put a parking space, so the, I'm sure you've all looked at the application, the, you know, the issue here is that a part of this, if not all of it, kind of ends up in the front yard.
All of it's got a, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the front yard, but, but to the side, and, and, um.
What about your garden?
Huh?
What about your garden?
I know.
Part of it's going away.
I'm getting old.
Yeah.
I need a parking, I just need a parking space, I hate ice, all these years, I love, yeah, gardening.
Will come and dig up your flowers.
So my only, my only issue with this, and of course it is contingent upon the DPW, you know, approving the curb cut. Let's see, why they wouldn't, the sightlines in both directions seem to be okay. Um, but it's up to, you know, they have to approve it. Um, my only thing is, is that I would prefer that you move as close to the right side property lines as possible. So that less of the car and the driveway, you know, is right in front of the building. Pardon? So just go all. Because, because right, right, you know, this is much of. It's just you didn't know everything, and visually, and that's the issue with having parked cars in front of houses. Same as, is the visual.
Well, you know, I had parked on the street, and I got pushed down the street by one of those trucking companies delivering, so I came back, I had a little blast Metro, and I just happened to be leaving my house at the time, and my car was halfway down the street. So, and this was years ago, and so I started parking.
Pushed the car.
Yes. So I started parking in the schoolyard, and then all of a sudden I got this letter on my card that I couldn't park in the schoolyard. I also created a whole program for the George Washington School when I first moved here, called the Imagination Station. Not that because I did good things and I should get one out to have, but it's against law, but, you know, I feel, um, as I say, I do have COPD, I'm a lot older than my wife has. And I need a parking.
No, I, I, trust me when I tell you I understand the hardship and the, the, the situation, and parking on the street there is challenging, particularly in the winter time, and it's, it's, oh, believe me, I know, I lived on that street for a very long time, so I'm, uh, long, a long enough period of time, so, um, to know how difficult it is. And, um, I mean, you do have parking in front of the building, but like I said, it's challenging.
Exactly.
And it's not always available, because anybody can park there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but parking, that part of Washington Avenue was never full.
No.
I mean, not even close.
Well, you know, when the pizza parlor was there.
Pizza parlor is a unique situation, yeah.
Yeah, and now there's a bakery there, that's a wholesale bakery.
Right, so the sugar, not everyone in the neighborhood, but it smells, uh, you, you, I'm not murdering, so I smell the, the, the baked goods all day long. You can't buy them.
So, um, Eric, I asked this of you when we spoke, is, can, can, she can, a driveway, if I'm not mistaken, can go right up to the property line, right? So my, based on your drawing here, I think it would be better, and I don't know how everybody else feels, is if the parking space was scooched as far to the right as possible. I, the idea being is that it, less of your car is gonna be parked literally in front of your building. It's gonna be a little more off to the side.
Yeah. As long as, as long as it's on my property, nobody else, no, no. You know, and, uh, so how would you change the drawing?
Well, I think I put, I just put a little arrow here, but, you know, what, what, instead of it being here, you know, it would be, you know, like here.
A little bit, oh, sure.
Yeah.
See, so let's, so now, you're almost like not even in front of the corner of your building.
Oh, good, okay.
That's all.
You get out of your car and you run on your walkway.
Right.
So this way you wouldn't have to worry about.
Yeah, but it's not on the wall, it's not allowed.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, ideally, you're not supposed to have a car in front of the building at all, but as long as the car is off to the side, it, it reduces the visual impact of having the car in front of the house.
So, uh, now how, uh, when do, when do you think this could be done? Curb cut.
Well, that is totally not our purview. Uh, we, that would be, the, the, the curb cut is gonna have to be, the permit for it is gonna have to be issued by the Department of Public Works.
You'll have to fill out an application for Public Works.
Right, well, what about the check, the hundred and fifty dollar check that I already spent, what was that for?
This is for zoning varies.
Okay.
You have endless ways you can spend money.
All right, so would you be kind enough to tell me the procedure? In other words.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you work that out with Eric, because we don't, we don't.
No.
She just wants to know what the procedure is.
I'm gonna give you a letter saying that your variance was approved. You're gonna take that letter over to the Department of Public Works. And then you're gonna fill out their application, and I think there's a quickie out there, I think. And then they will come, once they approve, they will come over there and create the curb cut.
Okay.
So.
Do I have to do the other one?
Fine, because.
It's one of those.
We have to let her fill out one day.
Yeah, we can get it all outside, not, we won't, it's not made.
No, shoot, it's not gonna.
All the way.
And, no, it's not gonna get parked alongside the building, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All I'm trying to do is get the cars, and it's not like.
And she's got a.
Not here, but over here.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess you drop that lock on, I'll say, like, you know.
Just give me a call for. Somebody to grab your letter.
No, we don't, that, you know, that, it's a variance, it's not allowed in our current code, guy, you know, and they're all public and putting everything we've got in our new draft code, it's also still not allowed, and it's actually really, really not allowed in our new code. Right, so it's like, you know, we're trying to say that this is not the kind of thing that we wanna have in the city of Kingston. Um, we should be parking on, yeah.
You should, you still in meeting?
Yeah, we're still, yeah, we haven't, we haven't even voted, we haven't done your motion on this. Yeah, um, so if we're, if we're trying, you know, we're, we, in situations like this, where our street design is to try to encourage on-street parking, right? We want more cars on, parked on the street in a situation like this. It's what keeps the street safer, and, and, and Washington Avenue is one of the exact situations where we, we're trying to make that happen more, all right?
So if you're only parking on one side of the street.
There is one parking on one side of the street, exactly, yeah, so it's like, so the, the street becomes slower and safer if those, if that side of the street is full of parked cars.
Okay, I got a question.
Yeah.
Does the D, uh, DWP issue, um, parking spots for handicapped people?
Yeah, yeah.
Can she put that in front of her house?
Yeah, I believe you so, yeah.
I mean, that's another option.
Yeah.
So, this is, this falls under, um, and I understand, I, I understand Anthony's point of view. Uh, uh, this is not an ideal situation at all, having, uh, you know, getting into a situation where the car's parked in front of the house. So if we, would, would a solution to this problem, would it work for you if you could park on the street and be guaranteed that you have a parking space in front of your house?
Yeah.
Do you have any?
Yes, I do. But if, but if a car, big truck, delivering goods, and all of a sudden, driver gets, which exactly happens to be, I have a little Metro, truck driver got into the truck, did not see my car, pushed my car halfway down and split.
Okay, that, 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 that is in fact an accident or, uh, an unfortunate situation. I mean, the likelihood of it happening again is probably pretty minimal.
I hope so.
So do we all.
Here's, here's another, uh, thing, parking your car into the driveway, you're gonna be pulling it straight in. You're gonna back it back.
Really back.
No, they don't like going back the car in.
Oh, well.
Even worse.
Yeah.
It's just because, because of traffic and, and what you would have to do, um. You all right, Eric, you gonna make it?
It's, it's, it's really unsafe for pedestrians to back in, actually in some states it's illegal to back in parking spaces.
Yeah.
Anywhere.
It's, it's, there's no good solution for you to, pulling in, backing out, backing in, you know, it's, it's all bad. Especially with the traffic on that street. So, um, it would be, it would be, I think, a real solution is if we could just get a designated handicap parking space. Now, that's also the DPW.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She'd have to get a note from her doctor.
Yeah, so we got.
We gotta handicap.
Certainly got it.
Handicap, she's gonna have no problem getting that from her doctor.
I already have Dexel's enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So I think, I think this, I, I think this is a, a better solution for you, a better solution for you trying to.
Cheaper, yeah.
Yeah, cheaper, all of it. And you get to keep your garden.
And if you need help tending that garden, a lot of people in the neighborhood will help.
Yeah.
Boy, I know, the peach and lime.
Yeah, you're like the.
I have a peach.
Yeah.
Boy, do I have a peach.
Yeah.
Good, I'm coming.
Come, get the peach.
Yeah, really.
So.
All right, so you're saying.
Well, what, what, so, so just so that we don't, because if we deny this, then you can't come back. So, um.
Why?
Why don't we make a, uh, so just to make sure that you can accomplish what you need to accomplish, why don't you, for now, withdraw the application? And then if you can't accomplish it, then you can come back. But if we rule on this, as it's now currently construed, then, um, then you can't come back and ask us for the same thing. So I'm gonna say, suggest that you withdraw your application.
Does she have to pay the fee again?
I already, yeah, no, but if she.
She wouldn't have.
Just one.
I, I wouldn't, we wouldn't charge her.
You understand? Because if we vote on it now, and for some reason you can't work out this handicap spot for whatever reason, then you really can't come back. You, this withdrawing allows you to come back and say.
If we say, no, you can't do it, that's it, you can never come back on this issue.
Okay.
So if you withdraw it, and then vote.
He doesn't have the power to come back, but one of you could technically make a motion for a rehearing of it.
Yes, yes.
But it would be better if she.
But if, if this is cleaner, better.
Yeah.
Cause then you're not relying on, that if you want the power to come back on your own, um, this is the cleaner way, rather than having to vote on it, uh.
I would withdraw the application.
Yeah, and should withdraw the application.
You can always resubmit.
And.
It protects.
So it keeps, it'll keep them, you know.
The city.
The city doesn't.
Well, no, you, you just leave it on, just leave it on file, because you won't have to pay it again if you have to come back. If you do have to come back, I, I mean, I mean, I don't know the policy for refunds in this particular case. I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, how long would it take for her to, uh, get that answer?
Probably take a couple of weeks, at least.
Do you want to, do you want to just, uh?
We'll just hold the application and check.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, checks already been the positive, that's the controller's answer.
Right.
So I don't think, I'm checking the controller's.
Right, it, it, do we have any, do we know whether or not if a person withdraws an application?
Excuse me?
Do we know if they get refunded their application fee if they withdraw an application? Yeah. So in the end, this might cost you a hundred and fifty dollars. But.
I'm still.
But we still solve the problem.
And you'll save a lot of money if you don't.
I'm sure they're putting a driveway in.
Yeah.
We'll make sure he comes up and helps with the garden.
I'll come up. Nah, I want my daughter right there, and I said, very morning, it looks cool, so.
Okay, so, so what you're gonna wanna do is tomorrow, contact the Department of Public Works. And, and, and say that you're disabled and you live on Washington Avenue, you do not have a driveway, and that you wanna get a designated, uh, handicap parking space in front of your house, what's the procedure?
Okay, so do we have a number for this Department of Public?
We can get it, I can get that for you in a second. So, so you okay with withdrawing the application? So she's gonna withdraw, you're gonna hang on to the, so, okay. All right, so that's been withdrawn, thank you, and let's.
Now, do you want to, for us, just recreate that, Eric, and just, what's your DPDW number? Is, um, three, three, one, zero, six, eight, two.
We have a motion, and it's only two.
Yeah.
And is there a name?
Uh, it's DPW, the receptionist. Okay, um, I mean.
I would like to make a, can somebody make a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Oh, you know.